Good morning, it's 10:00 AM. We'll wait for the training staff. Okay, we call the meeting to order for August 28th at the Commissioners' Court in Polk County. If you haven't already done so, please turn off or mute your cell phones and pagers. And at this time, we would ask for Brett Lester to come forward from First Baptist Church and lead us in prayer.
Let's pray together. God, we are so grateful for this place that we call home. And as we stop today and reflect on you, God, we also reflect on where we were a year ago today. And God, how far you've brought us and, God, the ways that you provided in ways that we couldn't imagine. We thank you for our first responders and our law enforcement and our fire department and all of these that work so diligently for our county who led us through some very difficult times. And so, God, I just pray for them today. I pray for wisdom over them. And, God, we just thank you for your great protection over us. So, God bless this time and may it be for your glory and for your kingdom. Pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, anyone to lead us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, item number two on the agenda is public comments. We have two people that have signed up for our public comment for the 10 o'clock regular session. For both of them, for item four A, review compensation study report from Management Advisory Group and consider any necessary action. So, Marcia Cook?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is difficult looking into your faces from this side of the room. With so many years I've been looking at the back of your heads from the corner over there. For the record, my name is Marcia Cook and I'm the Assistant to the County Judge, a position that I've held for 32 years. And I thank Mrs. Fay Baker every day for the gentle persuasion she gave her husband, Judge Wayne Baker, back in 1986 when she said, "You need to hire this girl." I appreciate your time this morning. As you know, I've been on leave to care for our daughter during her illness, but I've continued to provide support to our office by working limited hours whenever possible. As a long-term veteran of the County Judge's office, having served three county judges, I've witnessed the growth and positive changes in county government through the leadership of many Commissioners' Courts. Like you, I hold a strong sense of commitment to how we serve citizens and how we care for employees. I also hold a great deal of respect for the important and often difficult job performed by the members of this court. That is why the discussion and certain statements made in your last session on August 14 regarding the recent compensation study report are deeply concerning to me, not only as an employee but also as a taxpayer. And I feel an obligation to share my thoughts with you. A reliable structure to set reasonable wages for county jobs was established 27 years ago in 1991 when our Commissioners' Court contracted for a salary and benefits study to establish the county's first-ever comprehensive personnel management system. The project created formal job descriptions and placed each job into a pay plan at a level that was consistent with our competitive job market at the time. A professional management consulting firm was selected for the project because the court realized that an independent study was the only way to ensure that all jobs were evaluated impartially, that all employees were treated fairly, and that all wage recommendations were justified within the current market without the influence of any personal or political bias. As the county chief administrator, the county judge and staff, including myself, worked closely with the firm selected for this first study as well as each study that has followed. Last year, this court determined that existing county jobs should again be evaluated for market competitiveness, and this court again asked for proposals from an independent consulting firm. After reviewing all of the proposals received, this court selected Management Advisory Group International, Inc., or MAG. A well-respected firm in the management consulting business for over 18 years, serving 13 clients in 13 states, from their main office in Washington, DC and regional offices in Florida and the Carolinas. This court then committed $55,000 in taxpayer funds to pay for the project. Over the course of the project, hundreds of hours have been expended in staff time to provide current data and to review drafts for oversights and changes in employee status. Employees dedicated time to complete job assessment questionnaires in which they themselves described the job they performed, and officials were asked to review those questionnaires for accuracy and completeness. MAG presented a final report that incorporated this information with market data and achieved this court's original objective without exceeding the proposed budget for transition costs. The report reflected at minimum a 2.5% increase for every job with an overall 5.67% increase in total wages for classified employees after compression adjustments were made to account for length of service. Knowing all of this, you can imagine the shock and confusion of hearing a suggestion at your last meeting that the completed study and the resulting recommendations be ignored and discarded, that instead only a 2.5% increase be applied across the board without any market considerations, and that $150,000 be awarded to one official to adjust wages at will within that official's department only, a suggestion that would accomplish nothing toward this court's intended goal of achieving market equity for all county jobs. As we've seen in past compensation studies and in most other aspects of county government, it's unlikely that your decisions will ever please everyone, but objectivity and fairness when it's evenly applied will always justify your actions. In all honesty, we knew that an impartial market study was not going to result in recommendations that every official, every department head, and every employee would unanimously agree with. You asked for and the employees and taxpayers expect a study that fairly reflects current market wages for county jobs while recognizing an individual's length of employment through compression adjustments, and that is what the MAG study and report has done. It was stated in your last meeting that none of the employees liked this, and I respectfully disagree. Employees were understandably confused by preliminary data that was distributed and discussed with them by individuals who at the time did not have a full understanding of the development stage of that data, which included basic job placement only and did not reflect employee compression adjustments. Employees have since asked for clarification from those directly involved in the process, have expressed appreciation for the fairness of consistent formulas applied throughout the study, and they have a better understanding of the final report recommendations. I've also seen statements from many of our elected officials who support the MAG study and option one of the report. As our governing body, this court is entrusted to make decisions that serve the best interest of the county as a whole, even when the right decision isn't necessarily pleasing to an individual member of the court or to a particular group. Taxpayers rely on this court to spend their money wisely, and employees rely on this court to treat us all fairly. I urge each of you to keep your original goal in mind, to ensure market equity for all county jobs, and to accomplish this goal by accepting and implementing the final compensation study report as presented by the company you selected and paid to provide you with appropriate recommendations. And I appreciate your time and your consideration this morning.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, our next speaker is Aaron Lockhart.
Good morning. And thank you all for the opportunity to address the court. My understanding that every member of the court has received a copy of a recent security vulnerability assessment that I performed on the website maginc.org owned by Management Advisory Group International. Am I correct in this?
Yes, sir. And it was forwarded to...
Yes, and I also provided a copy of that assessment to both Dawn Long and Carol Long of MAG. Briefly, I would just like to discuss some of these security vulnerabilities and kind of state for the public in as non-technical terms as possible the severity of the risk of compromise for the integrity, confidentiality, and availability of information submitted to MAG through their website and a lot of the vulnerabilities which were discovered. When first visiting their website, right away I noticed there's no SSL certificate. That's what creates the little lock icon when you're transferring secure information. None of us would even log into... None of us would even consider logging into Facebook without seeing that little lock, much less transmitting any information about our employment to such a system. And it's a basic aspect of computer literacy taught to beginner computer users, and any IT professional involved should have voiced concern immediately about this issue. All modern web browsers notify users that this security certificate is not present through one form or another. Some do it explicitly. When you go to enter your password information, for example, if you use Firefox, it warns you with a dropdown that your information cannot be guaranteed secure. Security certificates are cheap and easy to implement. 73% of all US-based websites since 2017 utilize a security certificate whether or not they receive user information. There's simply no excuse to not run one if you're receiving information from clients. Second set of vulnerabilities that these fall into, that would have been item number 11, by the way, in the inventory of vulnerabilities in the report. The second category concerns software path advantages in the life period. The web server software and operating system on which it runs reached their end-of-life period from Microsoft in July 2015. This means that the security community is no longer focused on determining where there are new vulnerabilities in this software as upgraded is the only recommended path. Microsoft provides no new security patches and no support for this. This would be like purchasing a vehicle and bringing it to the dealer and finding out the dealer will no longer service your vehicle. One particular vulnerability which was disclosed by researchers on March 27th of 2017, which is still present in MAG's implementation, it cannot be fixed using their current software, is rated as the most severe security exploit discovered by researchers in 2017. It received a Common Vulnerability Scoring System score of 10 out of 10. It is literally impossible to overstate the severity of an issue that receives that score. Furthermore, these vulnerabilities have been incorporated into automated tools for malicious users to use. An individual with very little knowledge of how to use a computer, much less how to be a hacker, if you will, can exploit this website as the doors are open. Those would be items six through 10 in the vulnerability assessment. The other issues regard misconfiguration of the existing software which creates a path for exploitation. Essentially, these misconfigurations would allow any user with very little knowledge -- there are tutorials online that are very easy to read that an average individual could use to upload files unknowingly to their website, to move existing files, to delete existing files, and to modify existing files. Furthermore, anything which is password protected can be bypassed on this website. There is no way that any information which was knowingly submitted to Management Advisory Group International can be guaranteed to have confidentiality integrity or availability, the basic cornerstones of information security. Furthermore, items six through 10, specifically items one, two, and three actually, would not only allow for information to be changed once it's submitted to that server or viewed by malicious third-party, it allows for that platform to be utilized as an attack vector against machines which are connecting to it, that include any personal devices which were used or any county resources which were used, allowing it to be a staging ground for further invasion onto the networks that those machines are connected to. Again, it is impossible to overstate the severity of the potential for compromise in this situation. As I stated previously, I have contacted Management Advisory Group International and attempted to perform responsible disclosure. Upon doing so, I was able to speak with Carol Long, Executive Vice President of Management Advisory Group, twice we have owned. In our second conversation, which was somewhat productive, she acknowledged that they are aware that their software is outdated and that there are potential issues. Where in my report, I have made the statement that this constituted a lack of diligence on their part and gross negligence, knowing that they have knowledge of these issues shows deliberate indifference to the security of any information submitted to their company or stored on any user's computers. When serving as a platform for exploitation, if you perform this, say, on a home computer, anything that you've accessed is now subject to compromise. If you've entered your credit card number, if you've reused a password, any information that can be obtained by you can be used for social engineering, identity theft, or blackmail purposes for officials who are in positions of public trust. Again, the severity cannot be overstated. To put it simply, it would have been safer for each county employee to have written all their vital information on a postcard and sent it naked through the United States mail, including credit cards and social security numbers, even if that information wasn't directly provided to Management Advisory Group International. If you sent it through the post office, only the people that can gain physical possession of a postcard like that can actually get the information. As this is connected to a global network, it would be as if you had sent that postcard to every post office on the planet for anyone to see. Are there any questions? I'm willing to answer any questions on that.
Any questions?
Can we ask questions at this point?
Well, actually, you can't.
That's what I thought.
No, not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Okay, so, I will say this. We forwarded the information to MAG Inc. We did also forward the information to the vendors that work with us, and so, any concerns have been discussed. The vendors that we work with basically stated that there were some vulnerabilities, but that's true of every website, basically, and that people are constantly closing those doors. So, anyway, we are working on it and we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item number three, informational reports. As you all know, the budget has been posted and we are making changes as they occur so that we will have as close to information as possible. And at this time, it's a moving target since things keep moving around. Okay, old business. Item number four, old business. Review compensation study report from Management Advisory Group International and consider any necessary action regarding this study. Actually, Dr. Long is with us today in case you have any questions. Dr. Long, can we get you to come closer to the front just in case someone would like to ask you any questions? We have had some different ideas tossed about in terms of how to proceed. Would you all like to ask Dr. Long questions first or start with the different options that have been presented by court members?
I have one. There was only names and years of service sent to y'all. There were no social security numbers, addresses, or anything like that on any of our employees, were there?
That is an absolutely correct statement. There was no private information. All the information that was shared was public information. We have had over 500 successful completed studies across the country for state and local governments. Over 300,000 employees have completed questionnaires that your employees did in such a fine manner.
That I looked at prior to submitting them to y'all. There was no information on there.
And what was failed to be presented here just a few minutes ago is that the information is public information. There was no private information, so there's no exposure. The information has been provided to the county. It's available. It's in the software that has been provided to the county, so there is no exposure. And I have no... I'm totally puzzled over the reason for an unauthorized hat on our website. I assume that this meeting is being recorded?
Yes, sir. Every meeting is recorded.
Thank you. Okay.
Sir. Okay, any other questions?
Dr. Long, how many drafts did you prepare for this study?
Three.
And what changed draft number one to draft number three?
What changed? I don't specifically know. There was probably some... There was additional information. There were always changes. There were updates because there were employees leaving the employment of county and coming to the employment of the county. So, that's a natural, standard kind of an approach that we use. We update the data. And if there has been an increase to a person's wages, that would have to be recognized as well, so it's as current as possible. That's a normal and standard process.
And who were these drafts sent to?
Our reporting relationship was to the county judge as the primary contact.
And did you send any of them to any other member on the Commissioners' Court?
On the Commissioners' Court? No.
Then why not?
Our reporting relationship was through the county judge.
Because this court asked for him to engage with us.
For the drafts, that's a normal process, a normal and standard approach where we provide a draft or internal review to the administrative project management team. And then, when we get to the point of feeling appropriate and comfortable that all the information is updated, then it's typically provided to the Commissioners.
You said that there wasn't any confidential information, personal confidential information on any of our employees that got to you that was not public record?
Far as I'm concerned, no. The information was provided by the county. We never asked for social security numbers or any information like that.
Well, if I showed you an email that was sent out the other day that had confidential information, names, birth date, social security numbers, addresses, would you think that would be appropriate?
It wasn't sent out. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about an email actually sent from the county judge's office regarding payroll that's got all the information of every deputy in the sheriff's office for the last three years, their social security number, their birth date. Would you think that that was an appropriate send?
I don't think so.
Were you instructed...
Could I please have that so that I can verify that, please? Well, this was the request from you all, Commissioner.
I didn't request it.
Well, one of the Commissioners did.
Which one?
I don't know. This is some of the information requested.
The only thing you need to know.
Well, I can certainly verify, but it actually only went out to the four Commissioners.
No, it didn't. If you read that, it went to several other people.
Carrie Miller, went to your office manager, each one of their office managers, and to you. And basically, this is a copy of the payroll.
Yeah, it is.
Which is the information that was requested by a member of this court. Now, in the future, if you don't want me to include you in an email when another member of the court...
Tell me who did include. Who was the member of the court?
Well, actually, this was requested by three different Commissioners, obviously not you.
Obviously not.
Yes, sir. And so, in the future, we will forward you that information. It's requested by a different member of the court.
Shouldn't be forwarding that information to anyone with social security numbers.
Let me see that. This is just... This is a copy of the payroll.
Yes, it is. And on here...
Yes, sir, it does.
It's got the social security numbers, the date of birth, the amount of money...
So, how does that involve MAG?
Well, I was just asking a professional opinion if he thought this was appropriate to put it out for public display.
Commissioner, if you wish to criticize me, then we can do that at a different time. It's certainly not...
One more question, Mr. Long. I noticed in the first draft and the second one, there was quite a bit of difference in payroll amounts and so forth. I also noticed in your proposal, and you said that there wouldn't any salaries be lowered that you would work from there on. But yet, in the filed report that came out, there's a contradictory statement in the middle of that report that says one employee, one employee out of the whole county will be paid their salary for two years. Then, after that, it will be adjusted to whatever the norm is supposed to be, which is a $4,000 reduction in salary. Now, those two statements contradict...
I don't... I'm sorry. That doesn't ring a bell. I don't have any knowledge of what you just said.
Well, I'll be glad, sure to, because I got the report here.
Okay. Perhaps you interpreted it in a way that wasn't intended in any way, because no individual salary was reduced during the project at all. None of the implementation approaches reduce salaries. The software doesn't do that.
But two years later, there is a reduction fixing to happen according to your report.
That doesn't ring a bell. I'm sorry, sir. There's no reference to that that I'm aware of.
Well, I'll be glad to ring your bell after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was our understanding, Commissioner, that nobody's salary would go down, nobody at all. And basically, what would happen is that eventually the salary scale would catch up to those individuals that are at the top. But nobody's was reduced, and nobody's will be reduced.
That's right, not in the first one. That's right.
No, sir, and nobody's...
And not for the first two years, but on the third year, one employee was singled out of the whole county to have it reduced.
Well, right now, you're only looking at... To my knowledge, that is inaccurate. However, right now, what we're looking at is that you would implement this, and then if we do the compression or we do anything else, well, then, everybody is going to be brought up to standards or to par. But nobody's salary is going down, not now, not next year, not the year after that.
Here, what I found on this study on the 20 steps, what we were at, and the 16 steps, there's some changes at the end, but what it... I mean, you're cutting off two steps out here on the 20 steps. This right here on the 16 step is a fair 2.5% increment in a step where the other one was... Might be 2.5 and it might be 3 on the way we used to do it. But this one right here is all on the 16 step is all 2.5% on a step from 1 to 16. That's the only difference I found in the thing.
It's actually 2.51, I think, because the way the software worked, that was the easiest way to implement them accurately.
Well, the numbers show different, you know, on step 18, 19, and 20, but these go up on 16. That's what I found in it.
I know that we have the ability to run a number of different types of pay plans and pay structures and agencies all over the country that administer pay structures in a different way. Some have 16 steps, some 18, some 20. I've seen as many as 25. So, we've worked at until we get a good satisfactory level, a number of steps that's recognized within the compensation philosophy and approach that you want to follow. Some agencies have 3%, some 3.5%. It varies with the economy over time. Early in the 2000s, it was the steps could be as many as 4% and 5%. And the last number of years here recently, they've been diminished, and I've seen, you know, 1.5%, 2% steps, 2.5% steps. So, it varies over time with the compensation philosophy of the agency.
What was the purpose of changing from 20 some odd steps back to 16?
If you had 20 steps with 2.5%, it would create a range from minimum to maximum that was beyond the market. We tried to create a structure that reflected the market as much as possible. And 16 steps, because I believe the county administration wanted to have 2.5% steps, with 16 steps, that creates a range from minimum to maximum that is... That reflects the market in terms of the range width. You couldn't... If you had 20 steps, it would be 60 some percent range, which is a little bit broader than what we normally would find out there. So, we tailored it to make sure that there were 2.5% steps, and the only way to do that and reflect the proper range was to establish 16 steps.
You said in one of your emails to me that you had participated in over 850 emails regarding this... regarding this report.
I don't count them, but, okay.
Well, I've got the email here if you want to look at it. Who were you, who were you talking to in those emails?
There was communication with the county judge and administrative staff.
No one else?
And HR.
Yeah, HR, naturally. That's a normal process.
Do you save your emails?
Not all of them. Why is that? Does that have anything to do with the study, sir?
Yes, it does, because I had to do an open records request to get the drafts and see what was going on.
Right.
And in that open records request, I requested your 150 emails that you said that you had been jockeying back and forth with, I assume, the judge.
Well, we provided all the information, all of the job announcements, questionnaires, and the software, and the training, and the ability to maintain your system. We provided all the draft information, the full drafts, and that is a normal process. I was not going to take the time to go back and find all the emails and all the information in reference to the entire study. That is not my job. My job is to provide you with drafts that are viable, workable, implementable for the benefit of employees. I'm not going to go back and spend time detailing, and I don't like emails that have nothing to do with the draft reports that have been provided to you.
I didn't ask for those that didn't have anything to do. I asked for the ones that did in my open records request, which you have not complied with.
Well, we should talk to the Attorney General, because we're not going to do it.
Okay, well, we'll have a visit about that.
Great.
Okay, so, one of the things on the steps, because just for the court's information. For example, on our highest pay grade right now, which is, I'm sure somewhere in the district attorney's office, at step 20, that's at $118,292. So if a person were to reach that step, then the total cost to the county would be $132,756. Now, it's a, and this is, this is looking at theirs. Now, it's, the max is $98,063, which is currently our step 12 or 13. And so, for part of it, in discussion with this group prior to us asking anyone to look at it, was we realized, recognized that our current pay scale was excessive, that there were too many steps, and so that it needed to be curtailed. And we also recognized that certain positions were underpaid according to the market. So, at this time, we have had some different, people come up with different ideas. And so Commissioner Overstreet has one idea that he would like to state, and Commissioner Purvis has one.
I think we ought to go with number one, compression. And any money that's left over to 500, some odd thousand dollars, go to the sheriff's office, let the sheriff, only for merit increases.
Okay, keep in mind that that, that this right now, the total amount, does not yet include the auditor's office and the district judge's office, because they're waiting to see what decision this court makes.
This was put together as a start, and I had a lot of elected officials got comments from them, and they said it helps their offices out throughout the county. And so, that's, you know, I thought the sheriff department thinks they're the underpaid ones and whatnot, so if we could leave that, if there's any money left, we could leave that up to the sheriff to disseminate that money to which employees he thinks deserves it.
Okay.
Well, that's one plan. Now, here's what I came up with, what I think's fair, and this is open for discussion with y'all. I give a 5% raise straight across the board to every employee. What's left after that, we divide equally among elected officials in their departments and the department heads, and let them bring their own employees up as they see fit to where they should be. 5% costs around $400,000. So we'll have whatever exit we have left.
We never crunched that before.
Whatever they have left.
After your discussion and with benefits, it would be a total of over $500,000 by the time we have the benefits.
5% straight across the board, was it?
Yes, sir.
Was that, within the study was for nothing? I mean, you know what I'm saying, the people that are down there on the bottom end...
No, if we give the money that's left over to the employees, to the elected officials, they can bring those employees up themselves.
Sound like a motion.
It doesn't, it doesn't...
That compression, to me, of benefit employee with 17 years, or 15 years. What about the one with nine years, 12 years?
Well, still, they might be brought up, if you looked at the study, they might be brought up at the bottom. The lower ends will be brought up more, because like you say, for instance, at the jails, some of them are in the jail, need 7, 8%, 10, up to 10%.
Okay, we give them 5, and then the sheriff pays what money's left and give them 2%. Let them decide.
Well, the sheriff won't have, he won't have much money, because by the time you take 50,000 or less than 50,000, it's for an employee, right?
Well, what it showed in there, would it cost $197,300?
Or 2.5?
Or 2.5, so 5% should cost?
Yes, sir, but that's not, keep in mind that the $197 does not include the district courts or the auditor's office.
It can't cost that much to...
No, sir, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you, so that's, so figure 400,000, right? So we went in and we compressed it with benefits and everything, because that's also not including benefits. So we went in and compressed it with benefits, well, not compressed it, but did the 5%, like you asked yesterday? And it would be coming out to $505,251.63 with our current employees or our current positions.
We can afford that. We've got that carryover.
That doesn't do anything to relieve those people that are currently underpaid according to the market.
Well, that's going to be, the department heads are going to have to work on that. And Mr. Purvis's idea was a good one about letting each department head decide. You may want to give some of them a 10% merit increase, some of them 4%. But it's not really up to us to know each individual's skills and so forth in every department. We've got our own employees that we know about. They got there that they know about, they need to be on the decision making too.
Well, if you do that, then we certainly are not taking care of those that are on the bottom. And part of the whole idea was that you're trying to attract people to work for the county and stay with the county. With the current compression, the way we have it right now, with the current compression, then it would be with the understanding that we, next year, we would do further compression, which would take care of those people that are, have been working with the county for eight or nine years.
Well, this study is not going to keep them from leaving the sheriff's office. The salaries there are too low right now as it is. And there's got to be some major adjustments made, and the sheriff can make them if he's got the funding.
The number one group leaving the sheriff's office are telecommunications operators. And the market study reflects a 10% increase for telecommunications operators. That's the number one group leaving.
Well, you also have trouble in the dispatch, and you have patrol staff.
That's the telecommunications operators.
So I think the question is, how much money do we want to throw at the sheriff?
What's the percentage on average that the sheriff's office would increase? Just the sheriff's office, not the...
With the...
By the study?
With the study, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office would get about $100,000. In the jail, we'd get an additional $100,000.
Okay, but how much would each deputy, what percentage would they...
Well, your deputies are the ones that came in closest to market as opposed to other people in that proposal.
3.5, some worse than there.
So if you do, if you do the compression, if you do Plan One, Option One, do the compression, and then you want, you wish to get the rest of the money to the sheriff's department, well, then, that's where he could come in and do some step adjustments for the deputies, because...
That was my plan. You could take what's left and give to him, and he could adjust that. But the ones down below would get brought up to where they need to be.
Basically, we're bringing everybody up to par and then give him the...
And then next year, we could do something else.
Well, and that may take care...
It ain't going to happen all at one time.
That may take care of some of the compression issues that began to, to begin with.
But there's not going to be none left if you do Option One.
You're going to have, you're going to have some money's left, there's not, but it's all, it would all go to the sheriff.
Sheriff, you got any comment for $14,000?
Yes, sir, no. $14,000, that's 10 people. Yes, sir, please do.
If I remember my numbers correct on the compression?
Yes, sir.
It affected 18 positions in the jail and five on the sheriff's office side.
Okay, I don't know how to do that.
I did have the number, but I couldn't find it this morning, how much increase it was.
That's fine.
For my, for the sheriff's office and jail, and also security to court hours.
Okay, so, so basically, with the compression, with Option One compression, you, at the sheriff's department, you would receive over $97,000, right at 98. And at the jail, you would receive basically $90,100.
I'm listening, I just want to get a book here.
Yeah, that's fine. So if you, if you then turn around, what's the average step for your, for your deputies?
One question I'd ask, Judge, in regard to the compression, does that include every position that we have at the jail and sheriff's office and at the judicial center?
It's every position for the whole county.
Because this, the book in the second draft did not have a correct number problem in clause.
Well, we can, we can correct that if...
I think it will make sure that by then...
Yeah, mine changed too, because it's different. I had one that went from like light equipment operator to heavy equipment operator from the first draft to the second draft and all that. Anybody that got a promotion or anything, it changed with them.
And also, we had some elected officials that did merit increases in the middle of it, so that will have to be adjusted also. Okay, um...
Okay, one other thing I would like to say about the merits. I've never used merit money without coming to the Commissioner's Court to get approval to use it, what I thought would need to be used. I've never just made a classification without coming to this court and asking the Commissioner to get that done.
Okay, so you were asking about deputies. I'll show a flag, please.
One of my biggest concerns with the second draft that came out, not the compression, is in the jail, it took every one of my correctional officers, regardless of whether eight, 12, 15 years, that put them all back into step one. The compression brought them up some.
Well, and that's what's intended to do.
I don't believe it was enough.
Okay, well, at this, at this point in time, that's the money that we have. And so, it's my job to make sure that we're as fair and consistent across the board to all of our employees. And so basically, what we did was, when we did the compression, we went in, we did the compression based on the directions from the court, and those were the options that were presented, you know, to the court for them to evaluate and to look at. If there is, we do have some additional monies. If one step, if one step increase is $1,200, you know, for, for the deputies, well, it's not much as far as anyone else is concerned either. But if that's a one-step increase, well, then certainly, that's going to affect 10 people at least in the sheriff's department, if that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, also, I have the reclassification of some of my folks, such as my dispatchers and correctional officers used to be in the same group. Now they're separated.
Okay, that's, that's all marketing.
I understand. You and I have had this discussion. I just want to make it clear to everybody else, okay? The detectives used to be classified as sergeants, but now they're classified as the same pay as the portal, which is a group below. And you have to go up five, six steps to get to where they are now. And that's, this did do that. It brought them up to that. But if I hire somebody else, they're going to have to come in and prove a step one? Or can I put them in a step six where they need to be?
Well, that's, that's your decision to make if you have the money available at that time.
I think according to this survey, even if you've got a detective been there 17 years, and he leaves for two years and comes back, he got to start at the bottom.
If he chooses to start him at the bottom.
If he chooses to start him at the bottom.
Yeah, that's all he chooses. I mean, you can hire whoever wants to start him at three or four.
You can't under the current rules.
Yeah.
Well, you don't, you don't have to, we don't have to necessarily adopt every single piece of this. We can adopt just the pay scale now, because we've been through several of these things and said we're going to have to review this, that we're going to have to review our compensation, we're going to have to review the numbers, we're going to have to review it all. So, and the thing about the compensation, we said this to begin with, that we were not going to be able to afford to do everything at one time. You know, that we were going to have to do it incrementally. And so to do the one, where you do the compression, then next year we come back, we do the compression, and if the court chooses next year, if the compression works, well, then we're good. And then we can start either providing merit monies or we're moving in a different direction.
Well, I'd like a motion, we go with one, compression.
Could we not go with the compression one and come up with more monies to help subsidize the sheriff, which we know is already too low?
Well, we know everybody's too low. So we can do the compression, and we can do, and we can do the 17 years, and then we can take the money that's remaining, which is Commissioner Overstreet's proposal, and give that to the sheriff so that he can at least start giving money to those deputy patrols, which is who is concerned.
I've got, like I said, I've got input from a lot of different elected officials. I mean, they're sitting in office with the problem everybody has, a lot of other people there, so, you know. That's just, that's my motion, to go with one, because we all know this is what's going to happen in one year, that everybody's going to get what they want, when we started this to start with.
How much are you talking about for the sheriff's office extra?
Whatever we have that...
Whatever's left on that deal, right, whatever's left when we get done with this. We have $550,000. It's not going to cost us that $550,000.
And then he can decide if he wants to give someone a two merits, two merit, two-step increase, he can do that, or one, however he decides to do it.
That's the sheriff's pot of money, only for merits.
Well, of course, one thing we don't have any place in regard to salary, in any kind of career ladder for the people.
Okay, can we finish with this first, and then we'll go to career ladders or other options?
Well, I'll discuss all of them first, and then I'll sit down.
Okay, go ahead.
And if I have something to say, I'll ask to say it again, so. We went through, our group, Mr. Sheriff, went through and figured out what we thought might be an equal salary for people, I thought. It didn't come up to the market value, but it came above what the survey said. And bringing everybody up to where we thought this should be in regard to sheriff's office and money, will be total of about $128,000 more than what the survey was.
And I understand, Sheriff, and you know what, the DA is doing the same thing, HR is doing the same thing, the treasurer, the clerks, everybody's doing the same thing. And I would love to, and if you will send this back, then we will certainly take it into consideration, but we simply cannot afford it at this one.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm wrong on that of what I said here. It actually take more than that?
Yes, sir.
To bring it up, that would be if everybody got across the board, 3.5% raise, and then... And then bring up what we thought meant actually $129,000.
That's correct.
So, but with the, uh, compression, or not the compression, the second deal, the difference between what we thought and what the sour survey came up with, maybe about $127,000. And that's soured only. That's not benefits, so.
Okay, we have, we had a motion.
But what it does is not to set people in sheriff's office according to the knowledge and experience on the job as compared to the jail. We hire anybody off the street that qualifies, that knows nothing about jail operation, anything that goes on and has been trained. And that makes sense when my people have been in 18 years.
Well, and you, and you can handle this with this additional money.
That's what we are around now.
Okay, so if you will send us that information, we can certainly look at it for...
How much you come to it?
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to do 17 years, uh, the first compression proposal number one, adjustment option one. And then give the remainder of the monies to the sheriff's, to the sheriff's office for him to place as he sees fit.
And that has nothing to do with the policy?
What's that? And nothing to do with the policy. The policy is just for us to consider. No, just for the pay.
And we have no idea how much that extra money would be?
Uh, we know it'll be close to $15,000.
How much?
Close to $15,000. The difference between, um, 535, 135,000, 136, and 550, which was the amount that we put in.
Extra 14, 15,000 dollars go to the sheriff's department.
That's 10, minimal of 10 people.
My people love to have it.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Overstreet. Do I have a second? Okay. There is no second. How would the life court like to proceed then?
I'm making most of do 5% across the board. Whatever's left, divided amongst the department heads and the sheriff's department.
Okay, so that'll be all departments?
Yeah, except Rowden Bridge will come to our...
Okay.
Except Rowden Bridge. We give our merit raise in, let them have their...
Okay, so we have a motion?
We have a number on the motion.
Well, we'll have to figure that out after we finish doing it. We'll just, we'll do it, I guess, per employee?
Yeah, divide. What will we do next year? Just wait and see?
No, we still have the problem of basically what will happen is that the majority of the monies will go to your higher paid employees.
That's what I'm saying. The lower paid, the lower paid will not be brought up at 5%.
No, sir.
Well, the majority, the majority of the people aren't getting much of a raise. Majority of the employees aren't getting much. And the, who they work for can bring the lower paid ones up with the extra money. It's way out of, I mean, everybody, everybody... We don't, we don't, we don't know what the merit pool would be though, to draw from.
Well, it won't, it won't be much.
How much merit pool would it be for, like, the clerk's office?
If you do 5% across the board, then it's gonna be over, over 500,000.
So, that could potentially be less.
So, that 197, that, the figure that we had, didn't you go to 500?
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. That was just raw numbers.
Would you be amenable to amend your motion to say that we give a 5% across the board? Throw out this policy? Stick with the policy we got now and allow Rowden Bridge to even give a 5% increase to their employees?
No, I mean, we was gonna give the 5% to our employees, but I'm telling you, stay out of the...
So, stay out of the original, the general fund?
No, no. Everybody, everybody across the board got 5% raise. But the extra money that was left went to them, elected officials and department heads. Except the extra money, Rowden Bridge didn't get any of the extra money. Because we already give our people our merit raise as, as we see, as we can.
Okay, can, can we, in that case, can we hold the top of our pay scale? And just reduce it and creep up so that we're at like 14 steps? 14 or 16 steps instead of the 20, which is what creates this huge range for us?
But I don't understand why the range is so particular. You're not ever gonna get there if the money's not there. And you can't, you can't outstep anybody because the auditor's not gonna prove anything unless the money's in their budget. And if it is, those elected officials ought to have the ability to go as many steps as they want to. I think what needs to happen is when somebody reaches that top step and if they need a raise, HR needs to automatically increase that step to however it goes. But just to say, we only gonna have 16 steps and, and you're gonna be stuck at 16.
No, sir, that's part of the problem. Part of the problem is that every time that someone reaches the top, then we move it up, move it up, move it up in terms of pay. When, when in fact, the job itself, not the person, the person may be worth it. Uh, you know, the person may be the best there ever was. But that position, that particular job in the market is worth X amount of dollars. And so, the taxpayers in, uh, basically eating it.
Let me see if I understand the motion. The motion was to put a 5% all the way across the board. Rowden Bridge is gonna do what they wanna do.
Correct.
That's, yeah, we're not, we're gonna stay out of that.
With the additional monies.
And the additional money goes to this, so.
No.
No, does all the, all the elected officials?
Is that not potentially less money though than Tom's motion?
Yes, sir.
That would be doing the sheriff a disservice then.
Judge?
Yes, sir, please.
Can you just make an observation?
Yes, sir.
In terms of how, uh, I see often agencies go forward and do this and go forward. Uh, you're getting into an implementation approach and, uh, there's a lot of different ways to do that. You have the software in place now with the county to run a whole wide variety of different types of implementation scenarios that creates, uh, uh, order and allows for addressing the compression that you're speeding up. You can do so many different things with the software. What I would hope, what I usually see is that, uh, the board looks at the structure itself and then assign it to the job and says, okay, this is a reasonable pay scale, reasonable pay structure. The jobs assigned to these levels are reasonable. This is the scale and this is the, these are the positions where we want to have them set within the pay structure. And then talk about implementation and using the software, which I believe you have with a...
Yes, sir, we do.
A second, you know, additional option. We have one, we have provided a few. And I think option one is the one that...
10% compression with, and then taking into consideration longevity.
Run out and use the software to do the calculation and so forth. And then put it in itself, right? So, just to observe that...
So, basically, your observation is, uh, accept the pay scale and then we can go in and implement, uh, 5% across the board using the new pay scale?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, 5% sounds, sounds good, but I don't think that some department's gonna end up with the money they were gonna get on the first one.
So, how?
No, I don't know. I mean...
Okay, so, would you like this?
So, McLoon says, so what is, what you're suggesting is table this and run some more scenarios and we find one that we like? Is that what you're suggesting?
He's saying, accept the pay scale and then we can play with it with, with the software that he's provided. Right? So, accept the pay scale and then we can go in and say, okay, implement a 5% raise across the board and we'll bring it back to you.
And see what happens. What you wanna try to do when you do the pay scale and you say, okay, this is a reasonable pay scale. You know, it's competitive, we're in a good position. And you wanna get the employees who are below the minimum, at least the minimum. But there is a cost to that at this point. And the software will do that automatically. And then you can look at the different implementation scenarios that will distribute the funding in a fair and equal manner. We call it equity adjustments. You call it compression. It's okay. Either can be used.
But it sound like we need to table it and then look at the figures.
Well, let's go ahead and accept the salary with the salary schedule, which allows us a starting point. And then we can go in and we can adjust the figures and we can come back to you all with additional information. So, right now, if we could accept the sal, the schedule itself, then we have someplace to work off of. Otherwise, we're just running blind again. And we will table it for the third time now. So, if we could accept the, the salary schedule...
Just scheduling.
Just the salary schedule. And then we will come back to you with additional...
That's all we authorized to do was the salary schedule. We didn't authorize a rewrite of the policy measure.
And we're not discussing policy right now. We're talking about strictly the salary schedule.
I'll make that motion second.
Commissioner Purvis, Second Commissioner Vincent, to accept the salary schedule and then we will come back with additional information.
Figure out what the best...
Figure out how, what the best word we... That'll pull it together. Sir, we amended the last motion. Yes, ma'am, cancel the last motion. Commissioner Overstreet's motion died for lack of a second. Commissioner Purvis has never gotten to a second.
So, I'll make a motion. We go with the salary schedule.
That's Commissioner Purvis.
As you're saying, we got to go.
Any further discussion or questions?
They wild by heck, we'll say please.
All, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I want to thank you and, uh, say thank you for all your involvement and attention to this. It's so important to the employees and, uh, we're working to try to put together a good implementation strategy.
Okay, uh, prior to, prior to leaving, um, the bookkeeper, we already have bookkeepers listed. I know that the two clerks were interested in having bookkeepers. Those are already on our list and on our salary schedule. Um, we would like, I'm assuming you'd like to move forward with adding an assistant to, uh, the commissioner. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very well. And so, we'd like to add assistant to the commissioner to our, to our grouping and we'll go from there.
Uh, we could, uh, we'll need to discuss the primary duties and responsibilities.
And we'll look at other counties and see what other counties do.
So, we know exactly where it's gonna fit in.
Correct. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, 4B, approved county clerk request for appointment of election judges and alternates and early voting ballot board judge for the November 6, 2018 general election. This was what we tabled from the last meeting. Um, the list is in your packet.
Motion to...
Motion to approve Commissioner Overstreet, Second Commissioner Purvis. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 4C, uh, considered request from Commissioner Willis for reconsideration of lease renewal between Polk County and Manay Center approved on July 10, 2018. Uh, we have some information from, that we got from Jim Allison. I discussed it with him. And Jim Allison said that according to chapter 263 of the local government code, that, uh, if we decided to do anything below market value, then we have to post it. We have to advertise it. Uh, we have to provide consideration to any other business, uh, that might be interested in that. If we decide to go below the market value, the market value that has been established out there is $1.25 to $1.50 per square foot. At this point, we, when we presented it before, the court decided to go to $1.40. If you wish to go to the 1.25, Jim Allison said it's still, still legal. Um, otherwise, what is the court's pleasure?
I'll make a motion and we just go out for bids and see what's there.
Okay.
I'll second that. That's very good.
So, for now, Manay is going to just be a month to month?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll see what it's gonna do.
Sounds good. Um, so I have a motion coming from Commissioner Willis to go out for bids and proposals. Do I have a second? Commissioner Purvis, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, for now, the action from the previous stands at $1.40. We'll go out for bids. Item number five, new business consent agenda. On B, you have an addition, number one, for $131,757.22. Number two, uh, $1,660, $1,660. Number three, $18,857.16. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wishes to pull off?
Uh, B.
Item D?
B.
D? Okay, schedule this.
Yeah, the final bill, I understand, is in there to, to pay for this MAG, uh, survey. I'd like to hold that one for two weeks till we see what they come up with and until I get my email.
Well, you can, you can hold it until they see what they come up with in terms of services provided. That's for sure. Okay, so, hold payment to MAG. Which one is it? I don't see it on there. Is it on there?
Well, I got word that it was, so if it's on there, that's okay. If it's not on there, I guess it'd be on there.
I don't see it on there.
I didn't look, but I was told it's on there.
It's on there. $19,000.
What's that?
The $19,000 is on there.
Okay, okay, very well. So, hold payment to MAG. And then otherwise approved. Okay, that comes as a motion from Commissioner Willis to hold payment to MAG. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Purvis, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on the rest of the consent agenda?
Motion for the same.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Purvis, Second Commissioner Overstreet, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number six, discussion and any necessary action regarding employee benefits, uh, which is ancillary insurance services. As you will recall, we asked Cecil Langston with Church Street Financial along with Fred Brown to be our broker and they have some information for the court.
Judge, I've got a couple of things to hand out.
Sure. And I'm sure none of you wish to read that. Before your reading, please.
So, uh, I am Cecil Langston. This is Fred Brown. We represent your broker that was selected at the court level to monitor and look at the health insurance. Y'all made the decision to follow through with that based on recommendation to go TAC. We did that. You know, that's been completed. We were also asked to review what's called ancillary products. And you guys, while it's not a budget impact item, which is talked about a lot, it's a very budget impact item at the employee level because it controls, it controls how much money they spend on. There, there are other products besides health insurance. So, we think that's very important. Couple of remarks, a couple more remarks. Again, we appreciate being here. I'll try to be respectful with y'all's time. In this document, you'll see... In this document, you'll see Brown's team started off with voluntary product recommendations. First one, this is going to be the dental. And I'd ask him to talk a little bit about that. If y'all can turn to TAB B for me, please, on the smaller documents that I just gave you, please.
Hello, I'm Fred Brown, Fred Brown Insurance Brokerage, Houston, and good morning.
Mr. Brown.
Hello, sir. All right. The first item here is voluntary dental, and right now, the program that's being offered to the employees through Ameritas is, is a plan that has some limitations and waiting periods and such in it. So, under the current plan, they make the employee wait to the third year before they get the full 1,500 of dental benefits. Under the MetLife recommendation, they get the full benefit from the, from the get-go. The second thing is that when they, dentists are reimbursed, there's a, what's called the usual customary reasonable charges, and they're limited to the 75th percentile. And what that means is someone goes in and has some dental work on, they're going to typically almost always get a balance bill from the dentist, whereas the insurance didn't pay enough with the plan. The Met program is the 90th percentile, which is the highest anyone allows, any carrier allows in the entire U.S. And if a dentist charges more than that, well, then they ought to be questioned because that is absolutely the top, top tier allowance. And Met probably has more dental insurance in, in the country nationally than, than any other carrier. And then the best part of this, on, on this plan, is the employees' costs come down 14, a little over 14% a month.
I checked with both of the, all three of the dentists in town, that this is acceptable for them. And then I would add that this MetLife Dental, y'all, that's what we have at Livingston and in the school district, and that's what we have at Noscola, this exact, this exact plan for their employees. So, am I name dropping on you? Yeah, and I got permission from them to do that. So, the level of service that we bring to that, along with those employers, I think that's important.
Yeah, Cecil and I have collaborated probably close to 14, 13, 14 years doing this, and I think he's supplied us by references that, you know, we're not up here just talking or saying we think we might do. We have results that we've been successful in through here. The next section is the vision. The vision usually tags along with the, with the dental. And very simply, the biggest issue with the vision was the, was the network. And the network utilized currently, we've recreated a VSP, that's Vision Service Plan, and that's the same network that Met utilizes. The coverages are the same, and then the, we get down to the bottom, and it's close to a 20% reduction in the, in the vision cost. So, once again, you're going to a, a smaller, much smaller carrier to probably the biggest in the business with, with Met at a, almost a 20% savings monthly to the employees. As Cecil said, this, you know, this isn't, we're not, we are discussing salaries and income, and, you know, the burdens that the county faces, but this puts money right back in the employees' pocket with a better plan, with a better program. So, we're excited to be able to offer that. In our earlier meetings, one thing that they, that they said was, was very important, and that was supplemental life in, in the first edition that you saw there in the big black proposal, so and another, we just, you know, we got so tied up on all these other programs that were being offered, we'd overlook the life. But with the Met program, sort of what's happening now is the platform that you're on now is like an individual platform, so they can ask everybody individual questions, make them wait a while. Whereas this, we're coming this with a, with a group platform. And so, because of that, the employees, all of them get $100,000 of guaranteed issue life insurance that, with no cutbacks. At AC, typically, you'll see a lot of employer groups, it cuts back $165 or $68, or terminates at $870. There's no cutbacks in this plan, and it's $100,000 of guaranteed issue. The spouses can also get $25,000 guaranteed issue, and $10,000 on the children. So, not to say everyone, a lot of your employees out there don't have a financial advisor, they don't have, they see these things on TV, and maybe it's a good deal for one year, but then the premiums start to double, you know, every year, and then they look up when they really need it, you know, five or 10 years down the road, and it's, and it's unaffordable. Well, this year, these, these rates are, if Met changes rates, they have to do it on every voluntary life, and they're filed with the state their, their group insurance rates are. So, guaranteed issue, no, no cutbacks, and then these base rates are guaranteed for another for two years.
With respect to the court's time, this is what we thought y'all were expecting from us, you wanted us to continue to go tab by tab on this?
Yes, they just need to know what the savings would be to our employees. Yeah, we want to make sure we take care of our employees.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Now, that's not to say some people out there, that they ask them, got to fill out a health statement or ask them a question, you're going to have lower rates in certain instances where somebody was able to fill out a health statement or question, or go through some sort of waiting period, or suicide clause, no telling what. But what we're trying to get at is a group platform that helps everybody, and a lot of times, those people that were turned out or didn't want to fill out a health statement or knew that they'd be turned out, they did. They're open to this, to this plan, and we've, in a minute here, we'll get to like a cancer plan, and with, we've got Met to waive pre-existing condition clause in the, in their program, so.
These are truly plans that we would offer at an employer level besides this account. So, these are, these are true group insurance products.
Right. And, and in the cases that, that Cecil mentioned, and even like besides Noscola and in the, in the school district, the, these are the type plans that East Tech has, the type plan that Sandy Eastern Electric has, and through us, I might add, that they've been quite satisfied with, I'm not, and. The next program is, is the short-term disability. It's voluntary, and these things can, can be skewed all over the place with, with how long it pays and how long you have to wait to afford. So, we thought, we looked some stuff, we had to wait two weeks before you go on claim. Well, this program, the recommendation is with Guardian, and once again, Guardian has been in force with the First National Bank and Sandy and Electric Company for 12 or 13 years, and we haven't had any complaints. But you just come down in scale, and employees get, can get up to 60% of their covered weekly earnings, and then, you know, this is the amount of what it would cost them at, at what age, and, and so, that's just sort of the scale there.
Does this policy also recognize pre-existing conditions?
Yes, the, the short-term disability, yes. Although you can be disabled, okay, but, but if you were, if you were...
Actively employed.
Yeah, actively at work, when, when, in other words, if someone's out right now, they've got to be actively at work to be able to sign up for the, for the, for the program. But if they're actively at work, then they're eligible for the voluntary, which, which once again, that was a concession. Once Met did it, we, we got Guardian to do that. We just didn't tell Guardian that, that, you know, they thought they were getting the whole package, but they never, never changed it on us, so, so that's, that's our understanding.
This is what we've done, y'all, as a best-in-class. You can tell we've done the very best class from, from the major carriers.
And we will have people here, if we're fortunate to be awarded this, we will have people here for booths on the ground, along with my people, Cecil's people, Met and Guardian representatives, to sit down face-to-face with the employees, to tell them, explain the nuances of the plan, and so, for them to know what they got, what they're paying for, and, and have a local office here that, that, you know, that they can go to for claim issues, or misunderstand how their benefits work, this type thing. Next, next item of coverage is, is accident plan. Simple enough, if you have an accident, they pay you so much a day, and there's some accidental death and dismemberment benefits thrown in with it. And, you know, for 13 bucks a day, you get 200 something a day for up to a year while you're in the hospital. You gotta, you know, there's an air ambulance benefit. A thousand's not going to pay much of an air ambulance, but at least it helps some. We're also, you currently individually have what's called a bridge plan with your existing carrier. We're going to get to a minute to a gap plan, which is just a lot broader than this. If you go in the hospital in the gap plan, you get $1,000 outpatient, you have something done, rape and arm, you go set it and leave, you come back, well, that's a $500 benefit. We're going to talk about that in a minute, too. But we just kept this simple of just a flat rate, 13 bucks on employee and an entire family, they wanted this benefit. And each one of these lines of coverage has a minimum participation. We can't go to the group plan and, and only have, you know, 10% or something of the folks sign up. So, in this particular line of coverage, we need 15% of the population to select the accident plan, or it won't be able to be offered on, on a group basis, participation. The next is just a straightforward, simple cancer plan, and Met makes it easy. You could buy 50,000 or 30,000, and bone marrow transplants covered in their hospital confinement. They throw in 200 bucks, but your initial cancer diagnosis benefit, you can select either 20,000 or 40,000. So, if you haven't, if you haven't been diagnosed with cancer anytime in the past, and it comes on you later on, well, you could select one of these benefits. And once again, they, Met's benefit, they all require 5% participation.
Let's start us with questions, please.
The, the next item is, is critical illness, and there's critical illness program in effect now, and the, and it's once again scheduled, you know, based on the age, the bracket in which you fall. But this, under heart attack, stroke, kidney failure, the kind of large claim of things that, that really happen, the percentages are high. We were just talking rates, Judge Murphy and I, a couple, a few weeks back, and she said, well, you know, the rates are cheaper right now in the other. So, well, let's just dig into the policy and look at the, look at the, what is it on the, on the heart attack, which is, you know, fairly common procedure? And I believe it was like 25% or something was the benefit, not 100%. And then that 25%, I don't know of, of what amount, but this is, once again, we've got guaranteed issue on employee up to $20,000 on, on critical, critical illness with a two-year rate guarantee. The next section is the, is the gap plan, and as I briefly mentioned to you, it's, this is sort of a, a sample of how, of how a plan works. And very simply, if you go in a hospital confined, it's a $1,000 benefit. And, but there's also with it is an outpatient benefit of $500. And the way that works, some people might be on chemo or something like that, and usually you get that $500 every 90 days that you haven't had your chemo treatment. So, in essence, you might get $2,000 of benefit, you know, in a year of the, on the outpatient benefit. And then if you're having to go in the hospital, you still get a $1,000 there. And this is age bracketed, and we left that right. Okay.
They are in the big book list.
They what?
They are in the big book list.
Okay, all right. Yeah. So, but, but once again...
Can I interrupt you real quick, Mr. Brown? Can, can we pull, can we find it in the, in the big book and, and get the front office to make some copies? We want to make sure everybody has all the information without digging through the big book list.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I could, I could keep going so we don't lose the time, and we'll just...
Yes, sir.
It'd be under gap land, under there.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. This MetLife Advantage, no carrier that we talked to, we're trying to look for an employee assistance program, whereas we're like counseling on drugs, or counseling on divorce, or whatever, whatever, without having any employer sponsored coverage, would give us a full loan EAP plan. But Met threw in this net that's Met Advantage, and it helps during time, it's more or less tied to the, to the life benefits, and anybody that has the life benefits has this in grief counseling, funeral assistance, beneficiary claim assistance, state resolution services, life settlements. But even retirement planning and will preparation are all available, and this is just a freebie that Met threw in as attached to their voluntary group life program. The next section is something that employees of Polk County have never had before, and as far as I know, and that is group legal. And they, Met, it's called MetLaw, they offer, I mean, advice, telephone advice, consumer protection, small claims decision, personal property protection, debt management, debt collection, identity theft, personal bankruptcy, tax audits, defense of civil lawsuits, administrative hearing representation, civil litigation, updates, these, the bad others, mortgages. Now, I'm sure some of these, the insurance, this thing is $21, whether you're single or you have a wife or children, this is $21 a month. I'm sure some sort of long drawn out state plan or will, will contest, contest, contestation that, that there's, you know, that, that their, the law firm involved is going to, is going to extend this. But it does give your folks some additional help, and hopefully, a lot of them don't have neither a personal local attorney. This simplifies their lives, they've got a number that they can call and get good advice and not be taken advantage of, not that many lawyers would do that. Any questions on, on the legal? The net is, the next, the net is, the next is the MetLife Auto Home, and this is just as simple as the employees have been given an 800 number where they can check and get their auto home insurance, or their motorcycle, or whatever it may be, and get a volume group discount, their, their boat, and mobile home, home, you know, whatever, but get a competitive quote, that should be competitive. And usually in these, this week, usually we see about 10% of the people it works for. Home models, and it's, you know, it's a specialty, but at least it gives them an outlet. A lot of people may have just been to the same, same age, the same carrier, something for another year, hadn't shopped it, and so, you just get your policy, call the 800 number, go on there, and shoot, it might save them $200, $300, $500 a year or something. And once again, we're just trying to put money back into the employees' pocket, and hopefully, some of these savings that we're doing, some of the other, they could use this to get the, you know, get the legal or the auto or, or home insurance, and...
That's a lot of information. I, I know this is not what y'all... That's a lot of information. I, I know this is not what y'all do every day, okay? Again, standing before you are the two people that represent the broker selection that was done by this court. This is our recommendation to you, based on these plans, we think these are best in class on what was available in the market. That will, you can see the first two listed were not by accident, that's the highest utilizers of the vision and the dental. You saw the largest production and cost to them on that, so we'd be comfortable, again, to answer any questions, so.
Not that, I know it's complicated, but right now y'all have a broad spectrum of individual plans, and, and so what we did was we worked with Adrina to find out, you know, what area, and then to try to cover overlap as much as that as we could. And people that want to keep their individual program, whatever, now that they have a colonial, they certainly can do that. And I believe the H.R. office has the forums or will have the forums for the people to do that. But we just hope it doesn't hurt participation in this, so it's, so it's not high enough for them to, and I know on the dental, that's forty-one percent, I think that's presently what's taken in dental, it's forty-one percent of the, of the program now. But with a much better plan and fifteen percent lower rates, we would hope that participation, you know, would increase.
Anybody have any questions?
But we'll offer, we'll offer either this or the, either one.
Yes, sir, they do not have to change.
Whichever one they like.
Whichever one they select. So, can I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on your, Commissioner Vincent, Commissioner Rover Street, any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consider approval of personnel matters as follows, reviewing consideration of personnel action form requests that are submitted since the last meeting, and review of any authorized emergency hiring. All of that information was in your packet.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Rover Street, Second Commissioner Willis, any further discussion or questions? Were there any emergency hires? Uh, no, we, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, consider request for revisions and amendments to the budget as follows. FY twenty eighteen budget revisions and amendments submitted by the county auditor's office, and that is in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Willis, Second Commissioner Rover Street, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, consider approval of offers to purchase tactical or proposed properties as follows. They're all in precinct two, Commissioner Vincent. Motion to settle, Commissioner Vincent, Second Commissioner Purvis, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, consider request to cancel a portion of Cedar Point subdivision, section six, removing a portion of block, of block eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen of block one, lots one, two, and three of block two, lots one and two of block three, and lots thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, and a portion of thirty-four of block four. And replat the same as Cedar Point, section seven, the channel at Cedar Point, lots one through twenty-five. Motion to approve, Commissioner Rover Street. I think you should repeat that, and you have thirty seconds to say it, Commissioner Purvis.
That's why I said that you said that.
Commissioner, okay. Motion by Commissioner Rover Street, Second by Commissioner Purvis, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
We need to take care of Commissioner Purvis over here. Okay, we have a decision. Consider approval of purchase agreement with Fish and Steel Equipment Company through Buy Board Contract Number five twenty-nine dash seventeen for the purchase of one model twenty-eighteen John Deere fifty-one hundred E tractor in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents to be paid from road and bridge, producing three fund balance, and noting Buy Board compliance with competitive purchasing requirements.
Now, like that, that's a tractor and a fifteen-foot back wing mower.
For that sum amount?
And a front end loader, yeah, a front end loader, tractor, fifteen-foot back wing mower.
Including mower. And I'm assuming all those specifics will be given to the auditor's office.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, he has them already. The motion to buy board, he has to do that for him.
That's fine.
He's approved.
Second.
So. We have a motion by Commissioner Purvis. Commissioner Rover Street, you want to make a second?
Second.
All, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now.
I present my motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Rover Street, Second.
Eleven thirty-five.
Commissioner Purvis. And time is eleven thirty-five. Thank you, ma'am.